Ready for your remarks. Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster on January 14, 2022 via email. Copy of this notice has been placed at the administrative building board, the district schools, Asbury Park Public School Building, the Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the state clerk on January 14, 2022. Our mission statement: The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education for everyone possessed with skills and character to succeed in diverse evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Salisbury?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. LaRocco?
Here.
Mr. Remy? Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Zinski?
Here.
Ms. Pope?
Here.
Please rise to the black suit. We want to start with our reports. Tom, I guess.
Thank you. Our finance and building and grounds got a little committee meetings got, the schedules got a little locked up there because of our special meetings. But the finance committee turned into an intimate meeting between Mr. Hastings and myself. And after the, after our special meeting last time. So we were able to touch on some things and from that can update everywhere else. As you know, from the special meeting we had last, uh, last week, we adopted a resolution approving our application for stabilization aid. Decisions are not expected from the state until at least after October. Uh, we also discussed the additional aid that's been received by the district for maintenance of equity. This is the reimbursement for the cuts that were made under S2 that under the federal guidelines for providing grants, those cuts could not be made. So we received additional aid. The committee unanimously agreed that this little finance committee humor there. Committee unanimously agreed. Let's look at very judicious use of that money and instead begin talking about what we're looking at in terms of revenue increase and anticipated losses for what will be the 2023, 24, the 2024 budget, I guess, actually. We're updating the five-year budget plan. Architectures, architectural services, we have the three ESAR bids. So our notes reflect if people are asking you. The first grant, the New Jersey Cares, 1.8 million. A lot of that for COVID relief actions, equipment, mask cleansers, that sort of thing. SR2, 7.4 million. That's where we get into now HVAC repairs or additions. We're doing things at all four of the schools. Along with that, NSR3, which is 16.3 million as well. A lot of that for the, the air systems in effect. So that we're well positioned moving into the future. Central office relocation to the Barack Obama Building. The district architect has walked that building. As I understand, will be giving administrators some, uh, some information on how to plot out that space, how to rework that space, be aware, obviously, in moving. We're going to have a bill there, but it's in term, in terms of return on investment, we will no longer be paying rent. And within a few years, we, we gain, we gain that back. I ended up connecting with Aaron Williams, who you may remember was in front of this board a year and a half or so ago with regard to his initiative for tennis in Asbury Park, for the Asbury Park children, as well as the community, I suppose. He's currently volunteering. He's teaching tennis at the Boys and Girls Club indoors and feels he has quite a bit of interest there. I got somewhat involved as his grant had looked at resurfacing of the courts between Obama and MLK. That, as we understand, it is not doable because of EPA issues as well as issues of that'll eat up that whole large tract of land that there hasn't really been a discussion what, what we might want to do there. We've got significant EPA issues. And for the first time, I actually toured the old tennis courts at, at the high school. Unfortunately, they were, they were built upon wet sand and peat moss going down below 20 feet, which brings about a significant amount of cracking in the courts and its settlement where that's not a, that's not a feasible spot as well. So as I'm handing off to athletics and work, building and grounds, seems like there's a potential feasible spot where the abandoned basketball courts are behind the high school. If we're interested in this. And then, of course, getting costs to see that there wouldn't be a cost to the district that the Asbury Park initiative could, could pick it all up and provide for maintenance costs into the future. So that's a possibility that I'll ask these other committees to, to look at. I don't have a lot of information with regard to his grant other than it was 350,000 and it was based upon what doesn't seem feasible to do. Either that spot between Obama and MLK or the, the old basketball courts, if you build there, they're just going to crack again. The only other, the only other other that I had was I did attend the homeowners association. I want to thank Ms. Ricks for, for her support at that meeting as well as our former president who was there as well, providing support to the school district, Ms. Amanda Zanderson. I was afforded very little time to speak. It became clear to me that the individual running the meetings wasn't necessarily interested in obtaining additional facts, but had, had an agenda he wanted to get through and perhaps has another agenda. But I did find that the homeowners group as a whole is not one homogeneous group looking to say all they care about is, is taxes. I didn't, I did not find that to be the case. So perhaps, or I would propose, or I would volunteer, run our own meeting with regard to education on school financing, what's been done, where we're going. Because the individual running the meeting didn't seem to be interested in those facts. The co-organizer of the homeowners association is a local developer. So unsurprisingly, he, he told me what we need to do is develop most of, most of our property. So I feel like in getting out what we're about, what we've accomplished, where we're going, and the actual facts of how financing works, we would have to do that on our accord. And that concludes our report. I'm going to leave there.
Ms. Ricks?
Hi there, everyone. The CNI committee did make, we had a short agenda and they are, it is as follows. We discussed the ALPS yearly writing contest for grades five through eight. And the theme of that contest is what is your American dream? And this is at no cost to the district. We also discussed girl, the girl, the Girl Scouts meeting at Thirteenth Marshall and Bradley Elementary, grades one through three throughout the 22, 23 school year. At no cost to the district. We discussed that director of curriculum, Mr. Ruiz, and six supervisors to become members of MC3 for school year at a cost of $500 for the entire school year. We talked briefly about school trips. At this time, we are still discussing that. At October's meeting, we hope to present to you after-school programs where we will use ESAFONS. I know there is something on the agenda about Big Brothers and Big Sisters wanting to run a program. And I'm going to ask Dr. Abbott Morris if she would elaborate on that.
Yes, good evening. It's the same program that we've had over the past two years. They have five different programs that they run. Two programs are run in the upper elementary school, middle school students, and the others are held in the high school. And what they do, it's a mentoring program. And it's based on careers. They partner, one of them, they partner with New Jersey National Gas. The other one, they partner with Jersey Shore. There's another one that partners with Allied Health and Sciences for students who are interested in those fields. And it's a mentoring program. They come in during the day, they come during lunch, they usually bring lunch with, with them, and they meet with the students as they partner up with their mentors. They also take a, the Project DAM is a program that is partnered with Momma's University. And they provide the busing for the kids to go to the university. But it's, it's the same program that we've had.
I just had a question, if I may, about the cost of the program. What does that cover? Because each one has a cost.
So it covers, I guess, the food that they feed the children. Some of the, also the mentoring program that they have. I think they pay the mentors phenomenal fee for coming in. So that's really what it covers. I'm sorry, I will add that it's coming out of the grant. That's the grant.
It looked like it was a school-based budget. Didn't say 20, it said 15.
So the original resolution added this school-based to the grant coordinator to see if we can use ESAR funding through the mental health component of those ones.
Good evening. For general policy and regulations, the committee discussed and reviewed the policies noted below, noting August was the second reading for this alert. Administration is reviewing the uniform regulation to make sure it reflects the current grade level uniform requirements. The committee also discussed the use of snow days and if they could be used as remote learning days. The committee also discussed the need for regulation to pair with athletic awards. Strauss estimate updates. High school student representative to the Board of Education was mandated, but also revised. Form revised. Policy 1511, Board of Education website accessibility, mandated and revised. Policy 2415, Every Student Succeeds Act, mandated and revised. This is policy and, this is regulation, is it? 2432, school-sponsored publication abolished. Policy 3216, dressing rooming revised. Policy 3270, professional responsibilities revised. Regulation 3270, lesson plans and plan books revised. Policy 4216, dressing rooming is new. Policy and regulation 5513, care of school property mandated revised. Policy 5517, school district issues student identification cards revised. And policy 5722, student journalism mandated and new. The other, MIDA updates to uniform regulation 5511, dress and rooming. Mr. Hastings, if you could elaborate, please.
Sure. We updated the regulation to reflect the different dress code requirements at the various grade levels as well as making the dress requirements gender neutral as opposed to specifying male versus female uniforms.
Thank you. Policy 2425, emergency virtual or remote instruction program. The mandated. I would suppose that's in case there was emergency snow days?
That refers to a state-issued closure to go back to remote. So if the district, if any district based on the governor's orders has to close for three or more days, we have to have a plan in place on how we continue to reach and teach and feed our students. And that plan as well is on the agenda tonight for adoption.
Thank you.
Producer, Ms. Salisbury? With the remote, with snow days, there's also regulations regarding using virtual days for snow days. So that was already cleared up last year that that is not a possibility unless we are already fully remote. So that's, that was clarified as well.
Understood. Thank you. That's it for policy and regulations.
Lastly, is athletics? On October 7th, we're going to be having a homecoming. And unfortunately, with the timing, we weren't able to get the phones, but we'll still have the alumni tents. And we'll be having the recognition of the king and queen at halftime. And then also the senior recognition will also happen as well. If you have the time, please come out and support October 7th.
Yeah, no, it, it was an addendum to earlier speaking.
Okay, I may ask your question in your report. Does that mean that the homecoming parade is canceled?
They didn't have enough time to get it together for such short notice because school year just started and they hadn't elected their officers. And they just can't get it, I mean, it's close, it's coming in a couple of weeks.
So there was just one addendum to buildings and grounds. So LaRocco went through our kind of retreat meeting that we had, most of the items. The boys and, I'm sorry, not the boys, the, the Girl Scouts submitted a use of facility application for consideration. And we received it fairly late with a fee waiver request this morning. Or a few, not this morning, a few months ago. And I believe it's placed on the agenda as an addendum as the organization directly supports our students and they're going to cover the cost of fees to register, participate for the students. I would support this, this request.
George, so you know, we didn't talk about the curriculum. And we did ask to make sure they did put their facilities use and if they had an add-on. Well, thanks for bringing it up. I'm, I was very happy they brought it back together.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, my new office is right by the Girl Scouts' main office. And they're just a fantastic organization. It's great to, to, to see them here. So what's that? I would love to get some cookies from you.
Maybe I'll bring them.
Okay, we're going to head into the public participation portion of the meeting. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and the group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. About that time, I'll open up public participation, please.
Hi, Debbie Lorenz. My son is a student in Asbury Park High School as a seventh grader. I live in Asbury Park. The first thing I would like to say is I am so appreciative that you guys have started the process in instilling a life skills program for the kids in the high school building. I just want to say that while the facilities are being updated, I hope that we will see some community-based projects happening in this fall while the weather is nice before we get into winter. Because I think that would be a great idea. I seem to allow, writing it down, thank you so much. So that is, you know, my suggestion for that. Because I know the facilities are not yet updated. The other thing that I want to say is that it really does take a village. And we are a village. And this year, I was a little disappointed that the village dropped the wall on scheduling for our special ed kids. Any of you who've had children know that routine is what kids crave. Well, guess what? Our special ed kids crave it more. And the reason is because they live by routines, especially our autistic population, which my son happens to be. And his schedule, it took an entire week for him to even have a schedule. His schedule is still not complete. One of the classes that is written down as an elective on his schedule is not even happening, from what I understand. And it's probably just as well as forensics. And what is he going to do with forensics except to help me watch murder TV shows? Which would be great, but I don't think it's going to come into handy. Electives that would be great for some of our special ed kids would be art, music, computers. But I've been told that they are not going to be available for seventh graders. My son loves art, music. He literally sits at home and makes music on his iPad. He loves art. He can tell you who painted the painting, the wave. I don't know. He can tell you who painted the screen. He can tell you who painted, I can't, a million other paintings. I don't know these things, but he does. He loves art and music. And these are not options that are going to even be available to him. I am sure that he is not the only special ed student that would benefit from electives like art, music, and computers. These are things that our special ed population enjoys. They are the only electives they enjoy besides Jim. And Jim just got added a week ago. I think that was pretty much all I wanted to say except that I would love to be updated on the timeline for the special ed life skills program as it is happening and when things are becoming available. My son is very verbal and he will tell me. So I hope that it will happen very quickly. And thank you. Have a good evening.
Tracy Rogers, 610 Soul Avenue. Basically, right, the 610 Soul Avenue. I just, I mean, this is not an answer or question or whatever the attorney said, but I, I want to know what happened with the football schedule. And our kids not being able to play their first game, I think is very embarrassing. I have people who I knew, because that's the area I grew up in. They were expecting a game. They called me and told me, you know, your team didn't show up. But that's regardless of sports or, I'm looking at the academic aspects. First, but I want to address the exhaustive financial committee's report. And I think that's, that's great that we see all these issues being addressed or talked about and being so exhausted. I hope we all are committing to a strong formulation of a team to start addressing the issues that are going to come up with it. There's a lot on that table, financing and funding and what is going on with how much we're losing. So, you know, these things need to be addressed. I've brought up quite a few issues that are being addressed now, people being moved to other buildings. But there's a lot of things that I see on this agenda as I read it at home. We're moving staff around. I don't understand what went on with some of the stuff that's moving around from positions. Because we're paying people to be here to do a job. And if they're not doing their job, then we need to know that. Or if actions are not being addressed, we need to know that. We need to know that this is a function, this, where people, these children are coming and being educated. And I just, I'm not seeing it. And that's my personal opinion. But I got the same response from a lot of other people who saw that article around town about kids not being academically healthy. So we need to get serious on being transparent about what's going on with this district, with these kids. And I, I, you know, it's just a problem, you know? We say we're ready, have kids ready for college, and then their academics are not able to, to show up for fall sports. That doesn't make sense to me. We want to be pushing these kids out where they're, where they do have an education and are able to succeed in this, in this, in this, in this society. So that's all I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Mrs. Bray. I just came here, I want to talk about a few things. I want to also be mindful that I address Mrs. Ms. Cook like she told me before. I'm so happy this year that I can say that my daughter's back in school, but it's not with you all. I don't understand really how you all can sit here and really act like you are affording opportunities for our children. You're so far behind, I mean, so far behind, so far behind. I don't understand how you accept all these donations and get all this money, but yet and still you cry that you have to pay money for other things in the past. So what do you keep asking for current money for? I guess you all thought the, the football thing was going to be easy. I know y'all had a hard time. I'm not sure why you'd all feel that your salary is more important than these programs for these children. I don't know who you all are really hood, one thing. But if people pay attention, these programs that you have and that you say that you're doing, the kids tell us the truth. That's how I know things. The Big Brother, Big Sister program, you're so far behind. That is a very good program. Co-op, you're so far behind. I had that on 70s, baby. You're not affording these children the tools that they need to survive, but you keep talking about success. How do you have success for children when you classify them and you penalize and stipulate them for the conditions that they may have? I don't really think that you all understand the terms of what these children have. Autism is not always an intellectual thing. And then here and there, you're flipping up the idea about virtual and this, this and that. I don't really understand how you all just sit here and be I don't really understand how you all just sit here and be positive and smiling and patting each other on the back and having your accolades thrown at people because you've done this and you have this many years' experience. To me, it really doesn't matter what you do, because you're doing really a poor-pitched job with our children, really. I put my daughter in Sisters Academy. They've been on trips. It's only, it's only, what is it, September? They've been on trips. She's been on three trips. You guys get branded and funded for trips, transportation, books. Would you say two percent? When's the last time these children have been on a trip? You're so worried about uniforms and this. What about the structure? You all are not even on one page. You, you definitely clearly do not know how to communicate. Everybody's always pointing the finger at somebody else, or it's what this person didn't do. I had such the worst experience with you all last year. I thought that I was about to have a psychiatric breakdown and be in jail, because I feel like you all are getting more money for my child than I did for her to. You're profiting off of my child and you're not giving her anything, because everything starts at home. And my child is very well-mannered, and she's very well-educated at home, and you guys are just making sure she succeeded and failed it.
Hi, Sarah Bloom, Asbury Park, Fourth Avenue, and Asbury Park Kiwanis Club. I'm just here to kind of share the message of who we are and leading your open and communication for us to help you, because Kiwanis Club is a, a group of super passionate people. One right there, one in the future. And we care about the kids in the community, even though we don't, I have fur babies that don't have kids. But we think that they're a reflection of a good community, healthy community, is a reflection of a healthy kid. We have a couple of things, and I'm going to talk really fast, because I always got a lot to say. So nobody really knows what Kiwanis is, and I'm going to say a little bit about it. Kiwanis creates opportunities for children to be curious, safe, healthy, regardless of the community they live in. When you give a child a chance to learn, experience, dream, grow, succeed, and thrive, great things happen. And our mission is, it's a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world one child and one community at a time. And we rechartered in 2020. And mid-pandemic, we were in the community for a long time. We actually started Mom's County Boys and Girls Club. When we were the Kiwanis Boys Club, we were a little sexist back then. It's no longer an old white man club. We got a, we got a diverse, now we struggle to find, I guess, our old white man quota. So we, and we also help out with, especially with Asbury Park. We used to have what's called a Key Club. So that is a service, service learning, a service leadership program that instills community service in children as young, with Key Kids Builders Club as young as elementary school. And service is a huge part of being a citizen and being a thriving part of the community. And it's really great, because you see kids helping other kids, and it's just like, makes my heart melt. And we also have what's called, in the making of an extra club, which is for differently abled adults, or disabled, however you look at it, for them to be a part of the community and get back, because they're often on the side of receiving. A few things that we have coming up. We, and I would like to do Key Club in the high school again. We should need an advisor, some money. Not that much, not that much, not that much. We have Key Clubs in Allied Health and Science and in Rainy. And we also do scholarship programs, award-winning scholarships. I was a sports reporter in my former life. We did student athlete and athlete of the year, which is, I love recognizing kids. I think that's super important, and for them to be recognized in front of their friends and family. It just like they should be, you know? Because there's no local news coverage, to be more unfortunate, like as we progress. Anyway, onto positive note. We have legacy play contests. We need 17 seconds of more time to vote. I will leave some papers here. We will get a $25,000 money worth of commercial playground equipment, which is nothing in the long run, but if we pair it with the council, which I visited council for, and, okay, anyway. I will leave my information and all that, and they can vouch for me.
Is there, you said there was an event on Saturday? I'm sorry.
Oh, there, um, yeah, there's an event on Saturday. Oh. I'm not photo-ready. Okay. There is an event on Saturday. It's our family field day. And so we actually have, so this is also an opportunity for high schoolers, and I would love to give them Service Hour opportunities. They can help. We have a craft table. It's from 11:00 to 3:00 at Sprague Wood Avenue. And I can email that to whoever. It's from 11:00 to 3:00. We're going to have games. We're going to have, I think McDonald's Doggy Water or something. Chubbs Home for a Chicken Nugget.
If I had just saw this being, the event is Saturday, the 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're hoping that all our district children and families attend. There will be plenty of tables and field games. A snack. We have a DJ and for music and entertainment. And we just have like a questionnaire that we're going to hand out to the kids to get their thoughts on what it is and their expectations they have of their community supports, the district, and everything else. And we are willing to share that information with the board so that everyone has an idea of how the kids feel and, you know, what it is their expectations are of the adults that service them.
Great explanation in fewer words than I did. But also, you can email me at sarah@asburyparkkiwanis.org. And we have Academy Charter, high school students also volunteering that I'm doing. So some of them might be from Asbury, so hop on it, Asbury Park High School. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Beverly Lyons, Asbury Park. Just to piggyback on this excellent introduction of surveying our youth and what they have to consummate from their hearts when they're seeing what they're feeling. And my experience this morning in a very successful student advisory committee meeting, it was very invigorating for me to hear our children honestly share their hearts about, we may think they're simple, but you can hear their hearts when they say, this isn't well, or we like this, or we don't like that. So I just want to say thank you. I know we had an explosion in the beginning of the year, but you know what? With that explosion, things began to open up. So sometimes when we have explosion, it isn't necessarily negative. It's beneficial for us, especially when it comes to our childrens, the children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? And this talk will close public participation.
Madam President, first, I wanted to, I think she left out to the hallway. You could, I'll just go along. Part of the board regulation and policy was identifying a student representative for the board. We have done so with the support of Ms. Bridget O'Neill, the high school principal. I would like to call up Sarah Martinez Hernandez, our 11th grader, Dream Academy student, who will be our student representative. Yes, so we're going to make sure you have a chair and a name tag, but.
You'll be official next time.
So Sarah is one of two representatives that we're going to have. Each month, they're going to prepare a short little report for you about some things that have been going on at the high school. So she has the first one for tonight.
Does Sarah want to come up and sit down and do it from here?
Do you want to sit up there?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, uh, this is cafeteria.
All right, so. Hi, my name is Sarah Martinez. I'm a junior academy, Dream Academy student at Asbury Park High School. And here's my report. I just came from a volleyball game, so please excuse my appearance. I would have dressed up more, but. So from the start of school year, we transitioned to many changes in contrast to last year's, last year, including uniform, time of entry, administration, and mask requirements. As students, it has been hard to adapt, but I'd like to mention that the majority of students have started utilizing the uniform and following requirements. Although I do feel like it is a drastic change, many students are having difficulty getting these uniforms. Today, we held a student advisory meeting to discuss options to have more uniform, like providing more uniforms at school. And the recent decision to make the polo tops to be multicolored was wise, in my opinion. The athletic aspect of things have also been good. The boys' soccer team has recently won in their game. The girls' volleyball team made it to second place in this year's volleyball tournament. And although I can't speak for all aspects of, like, sports and stuff, what I see, I think the football team is making some progress in, they're playing in games. And they will have a game tomorrow away at Pine Pleasant. I also would like to suggest the importance of our extracurricular programs and ensure that we have transportation. Last week, the Asbury Park Police ensured that we would make it home from our volleyball game due to the bus not being there on time or not showing up. And I'm very thankful for them. And in all in all, this school year has had a promising start, and I hope that there is more. So that's it.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, Ms. Martinez, before you step away. I wanted to touch on the uniform situation you spoke about. Thank you for bringing that up. Also, with the Kiwanis Club, we are in the process of getting uniforms, doing a donation-type drive for uniforms. And our goal is uniforms and school supplies. Normally, parents start the year off, and our goal is to midway through the school year to hand out additional uniforms and school supplies to help the district kids, you know, make it through the rest of the school year. So it's new. We're just getting the ball rolling. But yes, we, we're on top of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if there's any students that you know, you know, and you have some support of getting those sizes and colors.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Martinez, one of the things after our meeting this morning for the Student Advisory Club, I did go back, as I promised, and followed up on the recommendations regarding the lunches, the grab-and-go breakfast, as well as 60 shirts in all sizes from small to double X will be dropped off at the high school tomorrow. And so they'll be dropped off at the principal's office. So Ms. Beverly Lyons was part of that Student Advisory Committee meeting, and as I said to them, their voices and their recommendations are heard and acted upon. And so just wanted to let you know and tell Guadalupe that, you know, I'll be there next month. Okay?
Thank you for that. And also, I really would like to put a little bit more support on the bus situation. That's, I feel like that's a little bit.
Pressing.
Yeah, pressing.
So following the notification of Senator Toff not picking you guys up and the Asbury Park Police Department really jumping in and doing a great, great service for the community as well as the school, we've been on, on there regarding their contract obligation to busing. So that was as of the incident from the volleyball game, and then the other incidents regarding picking up students late, particularly our special needs students. So they're actually waiting almost 30 to 40 minutes after school on their busing. Okay? So those are situations that we're presently working on, but thank you.
Whereas the Open Club Meeting Act allows exclusion for discussion at the public participation of the meeting, certain matters are outlined below. Whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters, may, I'm sorry, may it will make such decisions public when a proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore, as resolved that September 22nd, 2022, to Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes outlined below, litigations or contract matters or client privileges and personal matters.
Thank you for that, members of the public or president. For those watching at home, the board will be retiring to executive session for approximately 10 to 15 minutes, after which time we will return to this room, and we will start our 7 o'clock regular meeting. So it'll be a short adjournment. We're going to go into exec, and we're going to come out as fast as we can so we can start at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Do we have a motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. In accordance with provisions of the Open Club Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided, out of the notice of this meeting, by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known, the agenda, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster on January 14th, 2022, the conference of this notice has been placed at the Administration Building Support District Schools in Asbury Park in this building. Asbury Park Police Department filed with the city clerk on January 14th, 2022, our mission statement. Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses skills and character to succeed in a diverse, global, being global society. Roll call, please.
Saul Spade. Mr. Bridge. Mr. Grill.
Here.
Mr. Larratt.
Here.
Mr. Remy. Mr. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders. Mrs. Zinski.
Here.
Mr. Hook.
Please rise to the line, salute. Is that the hour you're mistaking?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, public and those on television. This evening, we'll have Dr. Christy Howard Morris do the SSID required state reporting on our violence and vandalism. So I will, the SSD, excuse me. Dr. Howard Morris.
Good evening, everyone. As required, twice a year.
Um, as required, um, twice a year, um, every district is required to do the SSDS report, and this is for the school year twenty-twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-twenty-two, second reporting period, which covers January twenty-twenty-two to June twenty-twenty-two. Now, these are our numbers for this year. As you see, Asbury Park High School, we have thirty incidents. And let me explain what incidents are in case you don't recall. Incidents, covers violence, vandalism, substance abuse, and, uh, those types of, um, incidents. Other are any other placements, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and alternative school placement. Um, ninety-seven we had, and we had one HIP. Upper Elementary, we had eighteen incidents, ten other placements, fourteen HIPs. Uh, Bradley Elementary, we had none. And at Third Marshall, we had one incident, two other placements, and zero hits. So again, as I only do a double comparison so you can see kind of where we are with regard to our last year's period two. So this is twenty-twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one period two. And I did this last year, so as you can see, it's much less, and because, um, we weren't here last year, for the most part. So this is reflective of January twenty-twenty-one to June, excuse me, to June twenty-twenty-one. Now, I also, I added, um, the period one, just to refresh of what we did between September twenty-twenty-one and December twenty-twenty-two. So the numbers did go up somewhat, on the, uh, incidents and the other category. Um, I also compared, um, I put this one in here, school year twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen, because this is the first, this is the year before COVID, so this one would be more comparative to now. So these are the numbers that we had during, uh, period two, during school year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. And as you'll see afterwards, subsequent to that, school year twenty-nineteen, school year twenty-twenty is when we had COVID, so we weren't here for a full year. And that's the reason why I put this here, so you can look through it and see the comparison. So this is Asbury Park, um, High School, over the past three years, um, excuse me, past two years, we had twenty-seven additional, um, instances. And again, like I said, school year twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one is really not reflective because we were here at the time. So of course, we went up in every category. Um, same with Dr. Martin King, Upper Elementary School. Again, um, we went up in every category because we weren't really here, um, much for the school year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And Bradley, there was zero change. Third Grift Marshall, we went up in two categories, and we had zero HIPs, which is good. And this is a three-year comparison for the district totals. So, school year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, we were here from September until April. There were eighteen incidents, twenty, um, others, which is other placements, and zero hits. Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, that was the hybrid year. And of course, that's reflective, only four incidents, three other placements, and zero hits. And this year, we have forty-nine incidents, a hundred and nine others, and fifteen HIPs. So this is what our suspensions were this year from June, January to June, um, it's the number of suspensions that we had. Now, I did want, I wanted to break down exactly what our infractions are, and to make it kind of, make you understand what those suspensions represented. The majority of the represent, the, excuse me, the suspenses were for failure to report Saturday detention. So we're working with the high school, uh, principal to try to come up with another means so that we can ensure that students are coming to school on time. Because again, the majority of them not coming to Saturday detention was based upon them being late, not going to after-school detention, which led to a Saturday detention, or they didn't go to Saturday detention, it led to an in-school suspension. So we have to find another means to do that. Um, the second, um, offense was leaving school without permission. We had a lot of that this year. Um, again, post-COVID, our kids were used to coming and going as they pleased, and so it's kind of hard to get them back into the routine of being in school. Um, and we had, our third offense was assault, student on student, um, disrespect of the staff, fighting where injuries were involved, disu-, excuse me, disruptive, inappropriate behavior, then came possession of unauthorized substance. Next was cutting, which, uh, is required for ISS when you do that within a third town in a market period, and coordination of terrorists and threat. And so see, so these are some interventions that we're utilizing to deal with a lot of these infractions. So, thank you for bringing K Y T S back, because again, uh, post-COVID, we have a lot of situations where our students are dealing with, um, anxiety, depression, and some of the other things we had on the COVID, we're dealing with other kids. And so, they're gonna be bringing, um, tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three interventions through restorative practices, SEL online fitness. Um, we also have the Boys and Girls Club, who will be doing a mentoring program with our students. And as you see tonight, we have the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Mentorship Program. We also have Prevention First that we're bringing back. Um, they'll be doing life stories training. We have an urgent heart approach to professional development, in which they're teaching our staff how to speak to our students, so that they don't provide triggers for our students to react in a negative manner. And we also, um, are bringing the attuned schools approached for our, um, our high school staff, and we're bringing, excuse me, we already have our dangers and the mind resources that we use with the upper elementary school teachers, and we're requiring responsive classes to be done every morning in all the schools. Anyone have any questions?
Yes? I'm just curious, so after, um, the morning meeting, why do you announce the classroom? Can you just help me understand?
Okay. Okay, straight in front of this class. So, morning, she asked a question of what responsive classes is and what are morning meetings? So morning meetings, uh, there's a program, program that requires, well, this, it comes in different forms, but one of the forms that we require them to do morning meetings is a check-in. So when the students come in, you could do a check-in to see how, the temperature of each child, you could do a morning meeting based upon what we did this weekend, you could do a morning meeting based upon how you feel today. It's a community, so you sit in a circle, and, uh, it allows students to talk, it allows for teachers to get to know their students, for students to express themselves. And again, sometimes if a student comes in and they, you know, they don't want to really talk, perhaps the teacher will just let the student, you know, sit to the side of maybe call them out and speak to them privately, see what's going on. But it provides for the teacher and the student to build a relationship. It, it builds a community within the classroom. And so we do that every morning. Um, some of the schools, they do a mindful moment in the morning where they're teaching children how to breathe, um, so that they can relax. So, and this is not my local expertise, that's why we bring the point, but, um, a lot of our teachers, I want to say about five years ago, came in the summertime, they got trained in doing this. And we've been rolling it out since then, for new starters coming in. Any more questions?
The incidents for this year. The incidents for this year is very high.
Yes.
And we have a lot of intervention. Is there any way that midstream, we can see if these interventions are working?
Yes. With that, with that.
And maybe in halfway through, we could get another report to see if the incidents are starting to go down?
Yes. Definitely. Yes.
Doctor, how, how many, uh, do we have a number of, of the incidents of fighting and of assault? And what's the difference between assault and?
Yeah, so the difference between assault and fighting, so if you're just fighting, these are two people who get into a confrontation, and they fight. They, usually it's, uh, business, so they have an argument, they fight each other. And assault is when you beat someone down. So if I'm standing here and you just beat me up, that's assault. And usually, the person doesn't fight back, or the person doesn't see it coming, um, or someone jumped someone, that's assault. And so, again, that's the difference between fighting with injuries, because you may agree to fight someone, but the other person may get injured. So that's the distinction.
Do we have a number on?
Yes.
If I can answer just one more question.
True.
I noticed back on the list of, um, sorry. Where it showed incidents and other. I noticed the others were way higher than actual incidents.
So the others are the suspensions, so the result of what happened, so it's just, so it can be, so if you walk out of school, that's a suspension, but it doesn't fall into the category of violent events.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Morris. Um, this week, um, board, um, we've been, next month, we will launch into our recognition programs, our student of the month and staff of the month, um, so we'll begin that, um, as well as we've already begun, uh, several of our meetings. We started our DIAC meeting, which was held today, as well as our Student Advisory Committee. And this week, we also had our Labor Relations, um, meeting with both the ABEA and APAS. So that concludes my, um, board update for right now.
Uh, doctors, can, we can all attend the DIAC meetings, correct?
Yeah, you, I should, uh, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
So if those staying here.
It's not a forum.
Yeah.
Okay.
For you guys.
Right.
Yeah. Um, the DIAC, again, is a, um, we're reassessing our procedures and processes in order to make sure that we are effectively, um, doing things according to code and standard. Um, and some of that requires us to not only open up the opportunities for larger participation, um, of, of individuals, but it allows us to broaden the insight and understanding of the operations of the district. And Dr. Gibson, our HR director, will be leading that. I will just be a participant.
I want to thank Dr. Gibson for putting out the invite to everybody, including the the board, who has to, to.
Uh, now's the time of the meeting where there's going to be public participation. In accordance with Board Policy Zero-One-Six-Seven, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of this meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the president and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I open up held participation.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Tracy Williams. My name is Tracy Williams. Um, my grandson, Yazeed Johnson, attends the Asbury Park High School. He is a senior there. And I just came here today because I just have to let you know, with everything that's going on in the high school, with the schooling and the sports, um, I gotta just give Dr. Adams his flowers, because, you know, you always say, no news is good news. We think. So I thought my grandson was doing well. He was one of the ones that was ineligible to play football. Um, I just gotta say that in the beginning of the year, I was a little upset, but Dr. Adams, he never lied to me. He told me everything, how it was. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the new principal, Ms. O'Neil. We got him back on track where he needs to be. And hopefully, it'll get better. I just wanted to let everybody know that it's, hopefully, we're in the right direction. And I appreciate you.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Major, and I am part of the Mayor's Wellness Committee. I sent an email earlier today about next year, twenty-twenty-three, being the year of stigma-free Asbury Park. The stigma-free movement has been in place for quite some time. It was started by the National Alliance for Mental Illness. Asbury Park was actually the second municipality in Monmouth County to pass a resolution to be stigma-free. Now, as a former educator, the number of essays, spoken word, athletic opportunities, artistic opportunities that can come from the school district participating in this wonderful year-long event is incalculable. The opportunity to work and to get more opportunities to volunteer, um, community service, service learning, is amazing. So I look forward to hearing more and being able to answer more, perhaps via email, but I just wanted to come tonight and say, uh, thank you for considering it. Um, it has been forwarded to Dr. Adams' office, and I look forward to hearing from you all and answering any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? At this time, I will close the whole court discussion.
Brief comment, ma'am. Uh, I did receive the email. Um, I do have, and I did forward it to the high school principal. We will be talking about how we can roll that in with some of the, um, honor society, as well as some of the high school initiatives, wrapping it in with PBSIS at the school that will be, uh, launching, um, within the next few weeks at the high school, as well as broadcasting it, uh, to our other schools as well. So I did receive it. So, uh, Madam President and Board, our acts for consent agenda for all, uh, oh. Oh, that's, that's. One of the things that we're working on, um, is to continue to address our enrollment. Um, part of that is also addressing our attendance. Um, we have been steadily and closely monitoring our attendance for the last eleven days. Today is actually the official eleventh day of school. Uh, we've had nine full days and two, uh, reduced days. Um, so it's been something that we have looked at. We've averaged about ninety-two to ninety-four percent on our elementary levels. We're looking to make sure that our secondary meeting, our seventh and eighth, and, uh, ninth through twelve, are hovering around eighty-four to eighty-eight percent. And so we are looking to identify who those students are in order to also address, um, those needs. Um, and so part of that is, uh, utilizing our attendance officers, as well as our school incentive programs. Uh, PBSIS has launched at the, uh, other three schools, and again, the high school will launch theirs around homecoming time. Um, so, looking at our enrollment numbers, um, as you see from September, um, of twenty-twenty-two, um, we looked at, uh, I'll take the high school, um, to June, there was a slight decrease. Seventh and eighth grade, there was an increase. Uh, upper elementary, there was an increase by June from two-seventy-five to three-fourteen. Bradley, there was an increase from two-eighty-six to three-thirteen, and Third Grift Marshall, an increase from two-oh-nine to two-twenty-six. So our students are returning to us in certain different, um, aspects, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Um, and despite some of the, um, misinformation about the district, we continue to recognize our staff that are hardworking, um, and recognize our shortcomings and address them. Um, the most things that we can do is be transparent and be honest, um, and our numbers are our numbers. We know that our students. We know that our student enrollment is tied to our funding. And we're dealing with perception about our district. I'm happy to, you know, have spoken with the union president, Mr. John Papotani. And we are on the same page regarding moving the district and making sure that perception about the hard-working staff in this district is shared and put out there in the community. We do have offerings that are not in other locations, and we continue to recognize that. Again, looking at our daily attendance percentage, again, we're hovering around ninety percent, our goal. And you'll see that our district departmental goals are posted on our website. This year, we have a campaign in each department, and part of our attendance campaign is ninety-five or better. And so that's going to not only translate into our staff attendance, but into our student attendance. And we know that chronic absenteeism is an issue that plays transient communities. And so that's one of our main things. So, you know, you can go to a lot of our schools. Our parents are actively participating. Our goal is to tap into those students and those families that are not coming and to triage them and to provide those services that we can and to listen to what we can do. And that's mainly one of the reasons why I started the Student Advisory Committee, because the more information I get from the students about what they need to make our district a home away from home, the more that they will speak loud in volumes about the offerings and the greatness of our district. And I do believe in the greatness of Asbury Park. I do believe in the greatness of our staff, and I definitely believe in the greatness of our students. So that is my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Eric?
Madam President, I just have one question about the chronic absenteeism. Do you see, I know in previous years, there was, some of the chronic absenteeism was not necessarily intentional of the students or something like that. And sometimes it had to do where the, like you said, transient population, the parents have moved and we don't know about it. Is this, is that ten percent of those students that are knowingly, like, just not coming to school? They're just saying like, I'm not coming, or like, what's the breakdown of that?
It's culture. I think, I grew up with the, you know, this belief that to be early is to be on time. To be on time is to be late, and to be late is unacceptable. But when you are surviving and mom is working two jobs and the six-year-old is getting ready by the nine-year-old, you know, those are issues. But when you also have working parents who are, that's not their reality, I don't think any student intentionally wants to be late, even up to our high school students. But I think it's about us instilling the culture in this district that attendance matters from the top to the bottom. I'm here every day. I chronos in. I make sure that I'm present physically as well as mentally. Some people might question that, but I check in. I think with our students, being present matters. To our staff, being present matters. We all are working on changing the culture of attendance. And chronic absenteeism is about addressing the culture, not the culture of the students, but the culture of absenteeism and tardiness. And the more we can do that, and we can incentivize that, and we can make it known that being here and being on time is a life skill, I think we'll do that. I think we'll change that. I think, and also voicing that and being consistent and following through. So I think that we are addressing that. Our staff have done a great job last year in decreasing their absenteeism. I have to give kudos to them. They're now setting the example. I think it's going to translate to our students, but it is the culture. And as we are consistent in our culture, and as we are consistent in the message that being here matters, it will change around.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion for item nine A through C on page A two? Any comments or questions? Mr. Larraca?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Allsby?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, on A, B, C, we don't see.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Zetsky?
Yes, on C, I'm staying on A and B.
Ms. Cook? Thank you. Motion's carried.
Madam President, I'd ask for a consent agenda of all items, from B one, A through B seven. Thank you. Through B seven, number seven.
Second.
Questions, comments?
What was it, B what through?
All items, B one, A through B seven, number seven.
Not eight? Or is that the old one? I didn't get the update. Yes, I didn't get the update.
Thank you. Ms. Cook? Ms. Zetsky?
Yes.
Ms. Allsby?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, I'm staying on B two, two A, and C, B three, three C.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yes, I'm staying on B two, two E, and B three, six A. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Larraca?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on everything except B three, two D, I'm staying.
Thank you. Motion's carried. Could I have a motion for all items?
That's okay.
All items, C one, number one, through C seven, number two. Move by Ms. Cook?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zetsky. Any questions or comments? Ms. Cook? Ms. Zetsky?
Yes.
Ms. Allsby?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Larraca, excuse me, Mr. Larraca? And Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
All items carried.
Can I just say one thing before we, oh no, real quick. The event, the first football game home plate, or the event with the undefeated football team, I did get a comment from Officer Young. He said it was top-notch, first rate, and he really appreciated the night. And he said everything went well, and he really enjoyed it. So I just wanted to give kudos to everybody who was involved. I'm just, I wish I hadn't been able to be there, but I just wanted to forward that to everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
I just want to say it was awesome. I was there, and if you look at my Facebook page, I put some awesome pictures. As always.
I'll move the motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
I, on favor, I have any votes? Thank you.